Okay, thank you everyone for joining us. We are all meeting remotely tonight, so we will be voting individually. Every member has to vote either yes or no, instead of just raising their hands like we would if we were all in person. So it does take a little longer, but that is a law. So I'm gonna start tonight. I move that the Board of Selectmen directs the Town of Vinylhaven's legal counsel to file a rule ADK enforcement proceeding against Dana Blackington in Maine District Court with respect to property Mr. Blackington owns on 143 Pequot Road and on the Cripple Creek Road, both in the Town of Vinylhaven.
Second.
That's seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasparini votes yes. Pam Alley?
Yes.
Bill Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
I move that the foregoing approved vote may be incorporated into a future rule ADK lawsuit showing the Board's action as public officials to initiate such ADK enforcement lawsuit.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasparini votes yes. Pam Alley?
Yes.
Bill Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to number four minutes. Approved the minutes from the January nineteenth meeting.
Move approval.
Our second motion. Any discussion? Okay, say none. Eric Gasparini votes yes. Pam Alley?
Yes.
Bill Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, a proven sign treasurer's warrant number thirty-one, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasparini votes yes. Pam Alley?
Yes.
Bill Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Communications, number one. Thank you letter from Terry Waters with an Obscut Island air about the bench for Kevin Waters. Nice letter. Islesboro Island trust.
This is another follow-up letter, this one from the Islands Trust to the Anob Scott Bay Municipal Managers, asking to share with our boards. Phil, I think you had had some comment, follow-up from the last meeting about this. I don't know if you wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I sent the Board and you suggested draft letter of support for the Islesboro Town and the Islesboro Land Trust. And how does everybody feel about that?
I don't know if I remember seeing, I remember you writing something about how we should support them, but I don't remember seeing the letter, I don't think.
All right, I'll send it right out now and we can talk about it later on the agenda.
It's fine, I just don't remember seeing the letter. I mean, I think there's enough plastic in this country, we don't need to import it from Ireland or wherever it's coming from. Yeah, I think the letter is probably fine.
The letter just essentially says that we share Islesboro's concern about that sort of behavior and in particular, the lack of reporting.
That sounds fine. Yeah.
All right, I'll send it out over the signature of the Board of Selectmen.
If I could follow up on that.
I know I read, but I didn't read it. I just saw a little bulletin that they, the EPA or that somebody's taking action against this, against the people, I believe.
Yeah, the state is taking, the state has served them with a notice of violation.
Right. Not that that does much good now, it's kind of late, right?
Yeah, Phil, that's fine if you want to send out that letter with me anyway. I don't think.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just follow up quick on that?
Yeah.
I don't know, Jake, are you still on the zone council?
Yes.
I don't know, one thing I had asked Steve Miller was if they'd reached out to, you know, any of the lobster groups out there. Because I think part of the thing he's talking about is, you know, could or might this have any sort of, you know, negative effect on lobster marketing? Potentially, and so I didn't know if that was discussions at all the last year or so, or recently about this at any of your meetings or at different levels at the state or different organizations.
Say, everything we've been doing now is pretty much all whale-related, so we haven't got that going, but we haven't had a meeting since this happened in December anyway. We only meet like once a quarter, so.
Okay.
I'll try and bring it up, though. Although Islesboro's in a different zone than we are, surprisingly, for lobster management. Okay. Go on to US Census. This is another thank you letter. It's pretty interesting results there, I imagine. Okay, Maine, I'm not sure which organization.
Department of Ag Conservation and Forestry, I think.
Okay, Brown Tail Mo.
So just a letter coming from the state, trying to bring awareness to and asking the community towns to help provide information to the residents and visitors. Something that there was a pretty active non-board related committee out there that was working on this a few years ago. I think some people have been, I know Kirk with the land trust with the main coast, and I think the land trust as well has been trying to take down what they see on their properties. You know, so this was just on the right-hand side of that screen, just a quick survey of kind of the mid-coast area where these are aerial surveys the state does, where they can see the webs and the trees, so it's not limited to only those areas, but I'm just trying to bring awareness to this. I don't know if we want to try and do something more like we are with the ticks and Lyme disease right now out here and try and work with those other groups that are out here to do more, or what your thoughts might be if we want to do anything more on that.
If there's a group that's interested in, you know, tackling the problem, then I don't think we should discourage it, certainly. And I know they're on the island.
Pam, does this come up at any of your parks commissioners' meetings?
It actually hasn't, I was just thinking about that. I haven't heard anybody mention anything about the brown tail. So, am I muted? No.
Nope. We can certainly make information available on our website. I guess it'd be interesting to know if the Parks Commission has any thoughts on maintaining town parks, which should be separate from information for property owners.
Right, we're gonna have a meeting hopefully in the next week or so. Bring that up, make sure that everybody's aware of that and to make note of any anything they see on the properties that they care give to. I think it's important, I mean, people I think are quite aware of it because a lot of people have gotten the I can't think what you call it, on this, you know, have been affected by it, so. But I will mention it at our meeting.
I hope we will at least put it on, like you're saying, Andy, on the website, and then I would put a considerable notice in the wind, alerting people to the fact that it's a greater threat this year than it has been in my memory. And if we involve the land trust, that wouldn't be a bad idea either.
I agree, Phil.
Speakers on the floor. You know, there are a few people tuning in. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Just added one more person, I don't know if she has anything to add or not.
If there are no speakers on the floor, we'll go on to committee and department reports and assignments. Accept and appropriate donation. There's some very generous donations for this quarter.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your generosity. I move we accept the donations and appropriate them to the proper accounts. Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric Gasparini votes yes. Pam Alley?
Yes.
Bill Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Fox Island, oh no, Community Development Corporation.
George, are you? I can jump in, Gabe has a thing she wants to add as well. But just wanted to bring you up to date on sort of where we stand, what we've been doing thus far. I know Gabe has reported to you a couple of times, mostly the committee has been getting their arms around what is a CDC, what is a Community Development Corporation, what are some other examples around the state, what have been their successes and pitfalls? We've had some excellent information gathering, mostly over the last couple of months. We had a great productive discussion with Islesboro and their successes and what some of their challenges were. And we're not trying to reinvent the wheel because this has been created in a number of communities in Maine. We're just trying to learn what was unique to those towns that may or may not be shared by Vinylhaven, so that we can craft something that works best for Vinylhaven. And so after we learned about all those other community actions and organizations, we dove into Vinylhaven to try and understand what are the needs and the resources here? What are the shortfalls we have? What are some of the potential areas that a CDC could support? And we spent the last month basically having the entire committee divide up into different categories of resources and items that would be like commerce, infrastructure, services, professional services, trades, education, trying to get a sense of what do we have on the island now? What are we missing? What sort of things might need assistance? And then try and get our arms around defining a boundary for the CDC. For example, in going through this whole inventory, we're identifying things that are pretty obvious, like, for example sidewalks or a sewer system that should not be a CDC's responsibility to fund. And in the other extreme, there are situations where, for example, a restaurant might, a building or something might be going out of business, but it wouldn't be a town's, it wouldn't be right for a town to jump in and fund that sort of thing. A CDC could jump into that. And there's a gray area in between those two extremes that we're trying to get our arms around. And what's come out of this so far has been a pretty clear set of thoughts from the committee that we need to look at a couple of different categories of both funding and actions by a CDC. Capital items, purchasing things, for example Islesboro ended up buying a building where their only grocery store was located because the owners were retiring and wanted to sell out. The town did not want to lose that property, and there was apparently a young couple that wanted to start a grocery business but did not have the capital to buy the building. So their CDC equivalent stepped in, bought the building to keep it from going to another purpose and has leased it back to this couple that are starting and keeping the grocery store running. So that's an example of what Islesboro wanted to do with their funding. Some of the things we've come up with that are, have more to do with human capital on Vinylhaven. We're trying to look at resiliency and the human capital might be things like the encouraging trades, encouraging, for example, a vet, we don't have a vet on the island full-time. Is there a way that a CDC can play a role in helping to foster that? We're looking at volunteerism on the island and how so many entities are driven by volunteers, including a potential CDC. And how does a CDC, working in concert with other organizations, foster the civic responsibility and encouraging volunteerism? Is that a role? So none of these are concrete or defined permanently as the CDC's role yet, but these are the sorts of thinking and discussions that the committee is having as we go through this entire inventory to try and set some boundaries and guidelines on what the CDC will and will not do. And that in turn is going to help define the legal and structural financial organization of the CDC. So we need to, we've been studying what others have done, how they are organized, and understanding the pros and cons of each type of legal entity that a CDC would become in light of what sort of things we think the CDC should be doing for Vinylhaven. So we've been in the information gathering stage. We have a meeting coming up on the twenty-fifth of February to have a continued discussion on some of these needs that we've identified. And then we're going to be also, over the next six weeks, reaching out. The committee will be going out to talk to individuals in the community to sort of take the temperature of the community on this, the direction that we're thinking about. So we want to have this true consensus before it comes back to the select board with our recommendations. So that's where we stand right now, be happy to answer questions or Gabe can jump in too.
Think that was pretty thorough.
And to tag on to that, one of the things I've spoken with Andy about is sort of funding the next stage of this, which would be next fiscal year, once the committee has brought a recommendation forward to the select board and assuming the select board feels that moving ahead with this project makes sense, that there'll be, you know, sort of the next step of actually forming this entity. So any legal fees or time that it takes to construct the board, to, you know, support the board, public outreach, et cetera. So I'd like to just, I'd like to apply for a Maine Community Foundation Community Building Grant to do that work and just want to make sure that that deadline's coming up soon, and I just want to make sure that works for the select board.
Works for me.
Great.
It doesn't preclude us from any of the other grants that we're seeking, does it? I mean.
No, as far as I know, Andy, no other departments are planning to go after that grant, are they?
I know.
Yep, and I usually do a quick scan in the community to see who else is doing that, which I will do. See if we're competing against any other organizations. All right.
Great, so next is the broadband, is that someone else jumping on that one now?
Yeah, I'll screen share again. And sorry.
Is someone up here?
Yes, I'm out there.
Hi, Janan. Why don't you go ahead and I'll pull up our slide here in just a second.
Okay.
My technical challenges right now.
Yeah. Well, I'm here to recap where we are so far. We've been very busy. December third, we shared the broadband report that was produced by Acxiom, after which we've been offering a series of conversations from participants who've used different models and strategies to provide broadband to their communities. The first one that we had, first conversation was with Krista Thorp, Chair of the Bremen Broadband Committee. Bremen worked with a private telecom company, Tidewater Telecom. The cost of the system was eighty percent funded by that company, twenty percent by a town via Connect Me Grant. Because it's a private entity, the town has limited control over what decisions are made, but it seems to be a company that's very committed to their town and they seem to be really happy with the arrangement. The next one we had was with Mark Green. He's Chair of the Long Island Broadband Exploratory Committee. They decided to form a public-private partnership with Consolidated Communications. Consolidated promised to build a new fiber system funded by money borrowed by the town and that would be repaid by Consolidated from subscriber fees. The town owns the backbone infrastructure and CCI owns the fiber connections to the homes. This hasn't quite begun yet, they're still dickering about some parts of their contract. Number three was with Roger Hein of Islesboro. There's, as most of you probably know, is a municipally-owned fiber system that delivers one gigabit bit of service to all subscribers for three hundred and sixty dollars a year. Islesboro owns and controls the infrastructure and they have hired GWI to operate the system. Property taxes of roughly eight dollars per month for a hundred thousand valuation are expected to pay off the three point eight million dollar bond for the build-out. I think all of these conversations were exceptionally informative and of course have a lot more detail than I'm sharing. So if you haven't done so yet, I urge you to watch them. Gabe has posted them all over the place, on the town Facebook, on YouTube, on the town website and so forth. We have three more dates coming up. For the next one in February, we hope to look at a private investor model. I don't know if that's nailed down yet, but I think we're close. The task force itself will be meeting next week to make recommendations for those next steps that we want to submit for your review at your next select board meeting on the sixteenth. So we've been busy. And we'll be bringing things to a head pretty soon now, in March. Thank you.
Thank you, Janan. Is that it for broadband? Does anyone have any questions or? Okay, we'll go on to, Andy, if you bring up the agenda again. And Andy, you're on mute. Everybody's on mute.
Sorry, planning and community development's the next item.
Okay. Gabe?
I think, I think, I, oh, I have one thing to share, sorry. So the committee policy that we talked about, not at our last meeting, but the meeting before, is being circulated to committee chairs and possibly committee members along with a draft of the committee formation document. So once people have a chance to review that and provide some feedback, I'm hoping, if not by the next select board meeting, by the first meeting in March, I will be able to bring sort of the final drafts to you guys for review and approval.
Share support.
So just a summary of the calls and responses for 2020. I just highlighted some of the higher counts that were in there. So nine-one-one hang-ups was up there pretty high. That was sixty-nine total for the year. Court check-ins, property checks, and a hundred and sixty-seven traffic stops and forty-five violations. So the total calls for the 2020 calendar year was nine hundred and thirty-two. I do plan on Chad, we've been, I forgot to send him the login information for the last meeting, but he is willing to hop on a call with us in presumably the next meeting. It's the deputy that's been out here, so you'll have a chance to check in with him as we outlined in the contract to be able to have that access to either him or the supervisors.
Has he shared any concerns with you or anything? I mean, has he had any observations or concerns or anything?
I think, I mean, so he's generally get, has a sense of, you know, where he is now, what, kind of generally what's going on, but I mean, it's still a little bit of a learning thing for him, there's nothing that's really jumped out when you check in at least a couple of times a week, it seems. Nothing's huge that's going on, but, you know, I think really have that opportunity for you to the board to touch base with them at the next meeting would be probably pretty helpful for both sides, so.
Yeah, if you'd like to join us, that'd be great. Road Commissioners report. We know what they're doing today. Things, comments?
I just want to comment about the Ball Ground Hill, what a wonderful job they did down there cleaning that up. It really is great and I think the kids will have a wonderful time in the next few days, enjoying the snow. And the benches were an added plus.
Who did do that, was it Peter?
What, the benches?
Yeah, who did those? I noticed them.
No, actually Dusty made the benches.
Oh, the town crew did?
Yeah, he came up with, he made the small one first, and when I went to check and talked to him about the progress they were making, they asked me what I thought about more benches and we agreed they were inexpensive to build and he did it and everybody's appreciative. In fact, somebody made a comment to Steve that, how nice it was to have a place to set to put your skates on, so. They did a wonderful job, it's really nice.
Yeah, they were a big hit.
Yep. So thanks, kudos to the town crew.
Okay, we'll go on to Vinylhaven Ferry Tariff Committee.
So the, I'm on this committee and the reason I sent this out to everybody for their consideration was I'm not entirely sure that we, I'm not entirely sure we serve a purpose, and I just wanted to make sure that that there was consensus that in fact we did. So we are, as it says there, we are, we're supposed to meet regularly and talk about issues relating to ferry operations that are specific to Vinylhaven and issues unique to and having to do with the Vinylhaven Terminal operations and procedures. The committee was formed in the first place to address the very convoluted and confusing tariff fifteen to twenty years ago. It's no less confusing or convoluted today, but I'm just a little unclear about whether our, members of our committee would like to send out a notice in the wind inviting the public to contact us if they had things that they wanted to bring to the town's attention having to do with the ferry service. And I guess I want to find out how the Board of Selectmen feel about this committee soliciting opinions, complaints, that sort of thing from the public and then making, studying the issue, making recommendations to the Board of Selectmen.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I think, I think the committee still serves a purpose. I mean, you guys are likely to hear about issues before the board might or the town manager might.
Well, the only way we'd hear issues, hear about issues before you or the town manager is if we put this announcement in the wind regularly inviting people to contact us. And is that something that we'd rather have the public do than just come to the office and tell the town manager what's on their mind? The other members of the committee agree with you, and one of them, Alan, certainly is more familiar with the tariff and ferry operations than I am or anybody else for that matter.
That's a lot, that seems like a great idea. I mean, I think if you put it in the wind, you probably would get a bunch of suggestions or complaints or things that people might, might think are trivial and wouldn't want to bring to Andy or just, I mean, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, well, if everyone's on board, we'll go ahead and remember that.
All right, I'm on board.
So is it worth clarifying for those that might not be aware? Kind of that hierarchy, hierarchy, if you will, that that process. So we have a local tariff committee to kind of review the tariff and make sure that. You know, things are kind of going well for for the users from Vinyl Haven. And there's, you know, anything that kind of comes in that's a concern or needs to be addressed goes through the select board to the ferry advisory board. At the, with the ferry service they meet monthly or bi-monthly. And then from there, if it's a tariff change that goes through management at the ferry service. Is that correct, Phil?
Yeah. Yeah, and they do meet bi-monthly. Yep. Okay.
Old business, Portrait of a Graduate.
Gabe said Hillary is going to run with this one.
Oh, okay, great. Go ahead, Hillary.
Yeah, Hillary is on on board. So just, just so you guys know, like we're, what we're trying to do with. Our outreach over the next couple of months is that with it with the school board and with the select board. Other members of the process facilitators team will be presenting information. So Hillary is graciously volunteered tonight. So thank you, Hillary.
Awesome. And Gabe, I figured that the easiest way is as I kind of go through my spiel, I'll tell you when to change the slide. If that works.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start on slide two. This is a community wide process to help find the skills and knowledge that we want our students to know and to have to be successful and work. College life and as future citizens of this community and the world. What we have been working on is collecting data of the existing portrait and would like the whole community's involvement. This is not a closed group. What will come is the data will be synthesized to create a new portrait of a graduate that includes the gaps of what we want students to know and learn. A visual, a visual project and action plan specific to Vinyl Haven will be created. Next slide. The we I keep referring to is a group of 10, these 10 individuals that have been conducting the focus groups and created the survey. The guiding questions that got us here are what are student outcomes? How are we preparing students to choose pathways? How is success defined defined on Vinyl Haven? Are there conflicting narratives? And how relevant are school outcomes to the success of students and or the vitality of Vinyl Haven? Next slide. So far, we have had great participation with 130, 134 surveys completed and 24 people that have participated in various focus groups. The areas of the community that we have not heard much from are males in general, people in the age range of 35 to 44. And more specifically in that group are parents and former alumni. The idea behind the four focus group is that you might generate different responses and a group discussion as opposed to just handing out the survey. The focus group consists of 10 different questions asked that can take anywhere from a half hour to an hour, but that really depends on the amount of participants involved. Now I will invite you all to discuss the question that Phil posts in the email, or we could wait and have the board answer in focus groups. And if you decide to be in focus groups, we ask that no more than two board members per group. And if there's anything else, Gabe, that you want to add or any questions that want to be asked.
Jump in or?
I would say that Hillary and Yvonne and I did talk about. And and we did email a little bit with Phil about this, that if, so to 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 follow or tag along to what Hillary said, the focus groups. Might give a little bit more concentrated time and and focus on a series of questions. So this, this question. You know, isn't necessarily a standalone question. It would be sort of in context with a bunch of other questions. So. And Hillary, your experience of the focus groups is that they usually take about an hour and people are mostly doing them on Zoom?
Yep, that's the the way that I've conducted them is through Zoom or through FaceTime. And the longest one that I had was an hour and a half, but that was because I had four participants in that group. But my shortest was 20 minutes, so it can, it can really range.
And so ideally, is it, is it really like two to three people in a group, but we would. You know, to protect the fact that we can't have a quorum, we, like you said, we just at most two select board members would be in a focus group together.
Yep.
So is there interest among the select board to to for us to do a focus group with a couple of you at a time?
I'm certainly interested.
Great. Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, I would participate.
Awesome.
I have a question.
Janine, go ahead.
It just seems like such a broad question to me as an educator. To ask what skills or knowledge should our students have? Do you, do you drill down on that a little bit more when you have these focus groups? It just seems like it's so broad.
Absolutely. And we actually have kind of specific focus groups, like Mark Jackson has been trying to focus on talking to like the the fishermen. I've been kind of trying to talk to like former younger alumni and just the. Community in general, but then also we've been trying to get business owners. And each group of that, the questions may vary a little bit differently to be more specific to them. And also with the survey, the survey is, I think, around 50 questions. And it takes about 14 minutes to fill that out. And that actually gets really in depth with what you're talking about.
And some of those skills too, Janine, like there will actually be lists of things that you select. So some of the questions provide. Multiple choice answers.
Well, I figured that was the case, but I just looked at that question and thought, where do you start?
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks for answering.
Thanks, Hillary.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Hillary and Gabe. New business, MSAD eight Board of Directors. We need to appoint an interim director. We've had a resignation. So have we had anybody? To express an interest or?
Two people have expressed interest, either, I guess, both through my myself and through Rich Lyons. So the two that have, I don't know if I put in. I didn't put in, one of them submitted a letter along with. Her desire to to serve the interim. So Penny Lozaro is is one. And she had, she did send us a letter. You know, kind of outlining the the history of, you know, her role on different boards on the island. And her interest in serving on on that. And then Sarah Crossman did as well.
Okay.
So so are we, whoever we think will be the director or they'll just be on this board?
They're just called Board of Directors. They'll be one of the five directors. And it'll, it'll serve, they'll serve until the June election in which the community would elect. Another, I assume it'd be another three year term director.
And obviously, I would feel you should abstain from any discussion. So Penny, you said, you know, did, you know, we all, I guess we all are aware somewhat of her resume. She's, she was on the school board before and on the board of selection. Where obviously of budgets, which is school is about to begin their process.
And she used to work on the office at the school too, right?
Yes. Yes, she did. I forgot about that.
You want me to pull up? I can, I can grab her letter if you want.
That would be great. Did Sarah also send him a letter or?
I can bring up what Sarah had submitted. She did. Just send an email saying she was very interested in serving something she'd been thinking about doing for a while now.
That's unfortunate they're not on the meeting.
This is what Penny, can you see the letter now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so this is what Penny had submitted with her email of interest.
Could you, could you bring that up just a little bit more, Andy? Thank you.
Okay, so maybe I was mistaken. I thought she had been on the school board previously, but obviously I think I was wrong.
My understanding is that the the select board, you know, it's just your decision to appoint someone for the interim period. There's no screening from the from the school board to give you a recommendation. It's just based on what you. How you feel can, so someone that can best fulfill that that role over this period of time.
Has everyone finished reading that?
So it'd be four months.
Essentially.
Works out to be through pretty much through June.
Yeah.
It's there. You said Sarah also submitted a letter.
She, yeah, she had sent. Email, let me pull it up. You see that?
Yes. So perhaps the easiest way to do would be for someone to make a motion on who to, who they would like to see appointed, and then we can actually have a discussion about that person. I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Penny Lozaro to fill the vacancy on the. MSAD Board of Directors for a term that will expire after the election to be held in June of 2021. It's seconded by Pam Alley. I'll open up the. Open up discussion amongst the board. Jake, are you trying to raise your hand or?
No, I was just checking to see if I was muted.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think that. Seems like she has a lot of budget experience. And that's, like you said, the season that they're coming into. So, I mean. I mean, it would be nice to know if they plan on trying to continue serving or if it's just a four month thing. I guess that's something we probably can't ask anyway.
You know, either one of them might get on the board and in June run for the hills, you know, you never know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. If Penny's the interim and then come May or April, whenever they take papers out of, oops, if she. If she, if they want to take out papers and run, then that's great. So I agree that. She'd be good with the budget.
I mean, they'd probably both be good, but I just don't know how you.
It's a hard decision.
Yeah. Sure.
Any more questions? Okay.
I don't think we can do both.
Do what do you mean do both?
No. Vote, put both girls on the board.
There's only one vacancy.
Yeah, I know. I was responding to the peanut gallery.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll call for a vote. Eric Gasparini votes yes. Phil Crossman will abstain. Jake Thompson.
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Okay, so Penny Lozaro will be, will fill that vacancy. And thank you to both candidates for taking the time.
Yeah, thank you, girls. Ladies.
Okay, we're going to Ecomane Recycling Contract renewal discussion.
So it's hard to think that, you know, we're, I thought, you know, it seems like we just signed a contract for single stream recycling, but it has been over two years now. And so it was a three year term that we had signed with them. So that is coming up for renewal. Prices have continued to go up for tippage. I did try to put up here on the right hand side, just kind of showing. What we've processed for recycling going back till fiscal year 15 and 16. And there was one year that I didn't have data for and a couple, a couple of the years didn't have a full 12 month. But it does give you a pretty good idea. So it was the yellow bars going across there. You can see in 2018. So sorry, this chart lines up with our fiscal year. For anyone that's wondering why it starts with July. So in October of 2018 is when we started with Ecomane. And so that's where that yellow bar shows up for that year. And then everything above that. Showing the tippage. So our, our total recycling load has increased a bit from what it was before. We are able to carry more, almost twice as much, at least I think at least twice as much tonnage per trip than we were before. There's still quite a bit more to do. And I know the Waste Watchers have been. Working on a few things to better understand what's in our waste stream now and how to make some of those improvements. With regards to this contract, there's two options. One is what we've been in more or less, which is an increase to $95 per ton. I think we were. In the ballpark, I think 75. Up until now, or up until this next iteration. So. That would put us into this revenue cost year program, which is what we're now. We don't usually have to pay anything. We don't usually get anything back. And then the flat rate option, if you don't want to go into this cost revenue idea, it's a 145 per ton. I was looking at the difference. It's a big difference in per ton price, but you know, we're running about 100 tons a year. And you take that 100 tons and that difference there. You know, the dollar amount actually doesn't amount to a lot. It'd be great to get our numbers even higher and have more tonnage going, but we, you know, at 100 tons a year. You know, it doesn't, it isn't end up being a lot of, a lot of extra money, if you will. But it is still a lot. So our, our waste management contract, I think, comes up for a couple of years and we'll see what the waste numbers look like at that point. It's hard to say right now. We're paying about 70 or just about $72 a ton, I believe, for solid waste. In solid waste, we're running about 600 tons of municipal solid waste. So it's a significantly higher amount. We don't need to necessarily decide today, but we do need to do it soon. So if you want to look at it, if you have more questions, I can try and get more information back. I was waiting for something from Ecomane. To give us a better idea of, you know, what, you know, what, what has been the, you know, the revenue or the cost part of this for communities. And I haven't, I haven't gotten that back yet. They were still putting it together.
So it's an extra. $2,000 a year to recycle than it would be to throw it in the. Landfills, is that what you're telling me?
Approximately, yeah. You see the contamination fee schedule there in the contract? That's, that's currently in our contract now. You see the contamination fee schedule there in the contract? That's, that's currently in our contract now. Um, through great efforts of the Waste Watchers and the staff at the transfer station, we have not had a load over three percent contaminated. Um, most of them are two percent. Um, things like plastic bags, padded mailers, or some of the more common ones. Sometimes they get some styrofoam in there, which is probably just something that's left in a box, and we don't think to take out. Um, you know, so we're really good there. Um, you can see that it goes up a substantially if the load is contaminated. Um, and some towns do struggle with that, but I think where we've got great outreach and great staff, um, and we were a assorted system before. People had a really good idea what couldn't, couldn't go. Um, so that, that's another big component of, of cost, but again, we're very fortunate that we've not been over three percent.
So the CPI increased it. We would enter to give for ninety five dollars per ton for a two year term, correct?
Uh, I think it's either a three or a five.
Okay, so it could go up seven percent each year. Is that, is that what I'm reading correctly?
Not to exceed seven percent, but I guess you could read that as it could go up to seven percent a year.
Yeah, well, I'm just, let's just go worst case scenario. And then in, an option number one.
In five years, it'd be up to about a hundred and thirty dollars if it went up seven percent every year, roughly.
So, but, and also, so they would give us back some money of revenue, of money that they generate from whatever they do with the product.
It could, yeah, if they, if they end up having it that way. So I mean, they're, they're, in some aspect, it's kind of like having the option to go in like a co-op model, if you will, where, you know, they won't know until the end of the month how, how their books look for that month, um depending on how much comes in, what the market is for it, and how much is burned um for energy. Um, you know, so that, so that, that's what I was hoping to get a little more information on, you know, what does that look like um in the past, you know, for a couple of years for some of these communities that were in that program?
But why wouldn't you, I mean, why would you pay fifty dollars more a ton? I mean, what's, what's the uh argument for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the big thing is for, you know, if you've got substantial tonnage going out, I mean, you wanna kind of fix your budget that allows you to say, we know what the price is. Um, the other one, the revenue cost option, you know, it could vary. Um, you know, so it's not, it's not a guaranteed lock. I can, I think that's what we're in now, and I've not known us to have to pay um a cost share, but um I do wanna get that data from them to kind of see what that looks like.
But even if the, you know, like Jake said, if it goes up seven percent for five years, and it goes up each year, that it's still not gonna amount to a hundred forty five dollars.
Right.
A hundred dollars can also go up by seven percent each year.
Right.
And we don't get any of the revenue, you know, cost share. I don't, I don't understand, you know, the two options seem, unless I'm really missing something here.
I know, is there, is there a thing in number one that says if, you know, they're, they don't meet their budget, that each town that's in that one has to kick in more money or?
That's the cost, that's the cost share part of it, yeah.
Has that, has that ever happened, that people, that we had to kick in any year, month, or any year extra?
Uh, I'm, I am not familiar that we have had to, but again, that is the data that I'm hoping to get back from them.
Um, still. I don't, well, I don't think we could vote on it till we know
Yeah.
what extra cost share could be, I mean.
Gabe has her hand raised. Go ahead, Gabe.
I was just wondering, Andy, I know you told me this, but I don't remember the day our solid waste, uh municipal solid waste um contract expires or when we'll have to renew that.
I believe it's in twenty three.
Okay, so, so it doesn't overlap with this. Okay, I was just, just thinking about other options, fiber, right? I don't know, but anyway, just thinking about other options.
When we put on our next meeting's agenda, Andy, we have time to think about it. You have time to collect some data. The more information, and we'll go from there. Okay, um municipal software purchase, um clear gov proposal.
Yeah, so um this was actually something that um I had requested we remove from this year's budget. Um, out of concern for where things might, might have headed, um as the the pandemic had begun last spring. Um, so a, a one year purchase, you know, to get everything on, I think it was gonna be a little over twelve thousand dollars. Um, I actually think it was gonna be as much as fifteen thousand dollars at the time that we got the last quote. Um, so I've, you know, since Matt's come aboard to work with us on trying to integrate the strategic board strategic plan and, and kind of come up with these KPIs to work with departments to kind of share with the community and with the board, you know, how we're tying what the departments are doing, what the staff are doing into the, into the board strategic plan. Um, how what we're doing is connected to the budget and to put those in a way that people can see it. Um, you know, so this software, um, last year when I looked at it, was primarily for a budget building tool, budget book tool. Um, and you can see on the right hand side of the screen, that Budget Suite module, you know, kind of gives you a um visual of what that dashboard looks like for us that are working on the budget. Um, you know, and you can get um department heads the ability to get in here and, and work with the data. Um, the Budget Committee members, I'm, I'm understanding that they could get in there and look at it as well, um, and the select board. Um, so there's these different steps along the way um for approval. Um, it's interactive, post questions. Uh, we bring the data right from our bookkeeping software right into it. Um, you know, once you've established that in there, um, it makes it really easy if you wanna link it to any of your work products, your goals, your outcomes that you're set for, for that year. Um, so I think we're in a good place that that's naturally where we're headed, and I think this actually now is a good time to try and do this. Um, the quote I have from the company is actually a prorated amount for the rest of this fiscal year. Um, so if we were to sign up for it um and get a form, it'd be a four month prorata, um, you know, starting in March, it would be three thousand one hundred and seventy seven dollars and fifty cents to sign up for this year to have the, there's actually three modules within the program. Um, you know, so I'm, I'm recommending that we do go on with this, and you know, this is a big part of uh what Matt's trying to help us do and tie all this stuff together, and um he actually did a demo with them uh yesterday. I don't know if there's anything that he gleaned from that that's jumped out at him. I don't know if Matt put you on the spot, or if he wanted to hop on and provide any feedback for that.
Um, I think the only thing I would add is that um the, the Insights um Suite modules, kind of you see on the left side of your screen there, would are uh a really good tool to kind of keep the community at large apprised and informed on what's, what their tax dollars are going to and what the people uh, you know, who help keep the town running are doing uh week, month in, month out, and kind of give them a clear picture of uh everything that's going on in the town office. Um, and you know, it seems like a very, a very useful tool, and I think it would also make the lives of people who are employed by the town a lot easier, especially department heads and kind of streamlining how they do their budgeting, and then also how they, you know, do the reporting that uh they're hoping to, hoping to stay on top of.
Gabe has her hand up.
Gabe.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, to put in a, I mean, obviously I'm in the planning department, and I think this is a great planning tool, but I, I also feel like, as Andy said, like this is the time to do it. Um, so one of the, you know, one of the things, it's like, we need a tool. We need a tool that's gonna work. We did a ton of research last year around, you know, finding a tool that would work, but also one that was affordable. And this is the most comprehensive and affordable tool to integrate all of the department goals, uh, the budget, and to actually produce a budget book and to, to then be able to have that same system do the public facing engagement piece. So I think, you know, if in, in outreach and engagement, and, and as Matt just said, you know, that, that um Insights module, being able to, to, for people to go to a website and clearly see what is happening around capital projects. It could be departments, it could be anything, but it's all integrated and essentially whoever's, you know, inputting the data, it goes in, Andy can manage stuff, can produce a budget book from it. It just streamlines everything. It, I have no idea how much time it's gonna save, but I imagine it's gonna save a significant amount of time as well as on the outreach piece of it. And I think if the board is committed to transparency and sharing information with the community, I think this is the tool.
I think if we're gonna try something, now would be the time, since it's a, only a four month contract, to see if it's actually gonna work as well as you guys hope it will and everything.
Well, and I asked.
And I assume that there's money in the budget somewhere to pay for it.
Yeah, so I, um, two things, um, in all honesty, probably the first four months will only be populating it. Um, and getting up to speed on how to use it, you know, so we probably wouldn't, you know, we'll have something to to put forward and share probably, but it's not gonna have lent us the ability to build a budget for this budget years process that we're planning for now, obviously. Um, you know, so we won't have a full, full understanding of how it works in that aspect. You know, the, again, the insight piece, we probably would be able to get a few things up before the, this fiscal year's over. Um, on the contract price, we can sign on for a, a three year or a five year with no um, no obligation. You know, basically, there's a clause in there that says, you know, pending town approval at their annual budget. Um, you know, so it is something that we obviously still need to put in there, and if it's not supported um through that, you know, we're not held to it, is what, is what they're, what they're telling me. Um, and we also, if we wanna sign on for a three or a five year term, you know, we can lock in the rate that they're quoting us today, um, which the full amount minus the upfront discounts, um, is twelve thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Um, we could lock that price in for the next three or five years. Um, otherwise, it goes up three percent each year.
Twelve thousand dollars each year or no?
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, so if we're already at the point where the next four months are going to largely be spent, you know, just popularly, as you said, and it's not going to have a lot of you know, a lot of outreachability, then I think we ought to just wait, if it, if we're already at that point, and discuss it again when we start discussing the admin budget.
I mean, I respect that. Um, I think the four months is pretty crucial and critical, so that lets a lot, that would also allow us to start the new fiscal year with a full program, right? That would give us the time to get the base work input in place um to do that. Um, I don't see that as a, a hindrance or as a negative thing. Um, I think it's actually perfect that it would allow us to do that, um, and then start with the July first budget with the program running forward. We can put FY twenty two's numbers um into it. We just wouldn't, you know, we didn't start in January and December building out in the program, but we could certainly put the numbers in and have it ready to go for July first.
How much time do you think this will save you from having to do budget in the future and other committee people like, you know, Gabe or Mark or whoever, that won't be sitting at their desk as long and will be able to do something else? I mean, is, is there any thought to that?
Um, I mean, I tried tracking the last couple of years, what I spend in time just formatting spreadsheets um every year to get, to get into a blank slate to then send out. Um, you know, and it's probably the better part of four or five workdays um collectively. Um, you know, which isn't, which is fairly significant when you're talking about it's almost, almost a full work week to be able to focus on other things or with meetings with, with the staff to, to go forward with the budget. Um, you know, it's not, not a small amount of time in that sense. Um, it, it would streamline a lot of this. There's less room for error um in transposing numbers from one spreadsheet to another. Um, I don't have multiple versions of the same budget books that go out. Um, so it did, this, the program would allow that interactive um in collaboration even between different departments um through this process. And we do, Jake, you, I don't think I answered it. You had asked about the, the funds for this year, so um because there wasn't a whole lot of um, oh, no travel, um, the lodging and travel expenses and the admin budget were largely unspent. Um, and we're still doing some training, but not nearly as much as we would have done in person um off island. So, you know, there's, I, I'm, I'm estimating or projecting about a fifteen thousand dollar unspent funds, you know, for the admin budget in particular. Um, you know, so at under thirty two hundred bucks to sign off for the remainder of this year, uh we certainly have the ability to do that.
And then how much did you say a year, Andy, after that?
Uh, the quote in us twelve thousand seven hundred and ten.
Yeah, it's, it's just, I, it, I'm, I take your word for it. It's probably, it's a great program, but you know, that's significant amount of money. And I, you know, I appreciate you doing the legwork on this also. You know, this is part of your job, you know, making recommendations to the board about, you know, how to improve your ability to do your job, but I don't know, I just, at this point in time, I think we should, we should continue to discuss it during budget season, but right now, no, I don't think I'm in favor of. But, you know, this, would somebody like to make a motion to sign on for, or you, we can continue talking about it as well.
Well, I agree with one thing. Andy spends, when it's budget season, how many weeks? I mean, how much energy and time and, and whatnot you put into it, Andy, and it, it takes away from a lot of other important things that you have to do. That's why, that's how I'm looking at it.
But so.
Yeah, it's huge.
And so like you said, you know, four or five days, but you know, it, it doesn't have to be four or five days in a row either, you know, it can be you know, a couple of days here and a couple of days later, and we're still going to have to have our meetings with budget workshops, and the Budget Committee is still going to have to meet on their basis as well. That's not, this isn't going to take away that, certainly.
Oh, not, not at all. I think, I think it actually enhances it, the process and allows a better collective, you know, process collaboration through all of it. Um, you know, the, the four or five days I mentioned, that was just for formatting spreadsheets. Um, clearing the old ones, getting the new ones in there, putting the numbers in, you know, so certainly there'll be certainly some of that. In any program you run, any spreadsheet you create, you're gonna have to have that. Um, you know, but I think it certainly would be reduced. Um, you know, it's a simple export and import from one system into another, from our bookkeeping software into the software. Um, so it's a significant time saving on that front of it, which is more time spent, you know, talking to the departments, find, you know, fine tuning the numbers. Um, you know, there's also a great capital projects piece of this that, you know, something we, we don't have a great piece on right now. Um, you know, it helps you forecast, um, does forecasting for you, uh, which is, you know, to put it in the visuals that they provide is something that'd be great for us to be able to look at Budget Committee, Departments, Select Board.
Gabe, uh, is your hand actually raised or if you?
It is actually raised. Um, just, just, I just wanted to point out too, it's not just the, you know, budget, the, the budget book building that, that would be a time saver. I just wanna just like pull back to the big picture of like why we're doing the strategic planning in the first place, and that we're trying to sort of pull everything under an umbrella of some unified goals and focus areas, and that we're asking departments to then build their budgets around your um, you know, high level objectives and goals. But then the, the idea of the KPIs or the key performance indicators is really just like we have to show that we're actually achieving those goals. And so there needs to be some sort of mechanism that is going to integrate all of that into one portal that's easy to input and then easy to put back out. And we can't do that with a million different Google spreadsheets or Excel spreadsheets. So to me, it comes down to like, it, you know, is transparency important? Is reporting out in, um, you know, in, in engagement with the community important? I mean, are, are meeting goals and having performance measures important? And if they are, I feel like in order to streamline things and make things actually work, you need a tool. And I think this is the most, I know it's, it's a lot of money, but it's like the most, the most reasonable tool. Otherwise, we're, you know, we can pay, we could pay a staff person to constantly put in Otherwise we're, you know, we can pay, we could pay a staff person to constantly put in data. We could pay a staff person to constantly put in website updates about all of these things. But this thing like makes it so one person's data goes in and, you know, someone sitting at home on their computer can find out all about, you know, capital project A. I just, I just think it's, it's part of what we've been working toward. And if we're not doing this tool, and I know this is a budget conversation, but I just feel like if this doesn't fly, then like what, what would we use? I, I really don't know.
Would somebody like to make a motion about purchasing this?
Oops, sorry.
Jake, go ahead.
Would, would this first four months, I mean, there wouldn't be any, so we would, would we be signing on for really 40 months at, at minimum if we made a motion today? Is that what, basically what we're saying?
And that's what I would recommend if you want to lock the fee in with no increase. If you want to take the, you know, the remainder of this year and, and I'd have to ask them, the way I got the service order worked up right now is for prorated for the rest of this year with a following year subscription. So I'll have to have them, I guess, ask them that question. I mean, as I mentioned before, there is the, the piece in the contract that says this is all pending town voter approval every year. So if any one of those years is not approved, you're not, you're not held to it.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I could see where this would be very helpful, especially in the future, you could do budget meetings on Zoom and different things. And I mean, who knows what might happen in the future? I mean, I could see it being very helpful. I mean, thousand, a thousand dollars a month is, seems like a lot to me too, but I can see it both ways, I guess.
I move, we go ahead with it.
If those made a motion that we purchase software, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Pam Alley. Is there any more discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Eric has for any votes? No. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
Hey, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. First one's just talked about housing committee, Gabe, Matt and myself met with Ellen last week. And Matt has another meeting set up with her and some of those that are interested, or is going to be at least setting up a meeting with her and those that are interested to try and further flesh out kind of a work product or, or better scope of, you know, what is it where the committee would be doing and bringing, bringing for a mission, you know, there is a mission that was approved by the board last two years ago, last year. You know, and is it the same? Are we doing more? You know, are there things that, you know, again, kind of in line with what Matt and Gabe have been working on with the committee policy handbook, trying to use this as, you know, my model for bringing, bringing to the board and making clear what it is we're trying to accomplish with this committee, so that the committee members don't feel like their time's wasted, that everyone knows what they're working towards. You know, so I think, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was kind of the next step to try and circle back with those committee members or those that had expressed interest in being on the committee to kind of pull that information out. Tariff update, so this goes, this just goes back to what Phil and we talked about earlier. I have had a lot of questions and, you know, feedback on freight. And I mean, it was compounded this past few months with the boats not having Thompson and we had the last few weeks. Doesn't make it easy. This time either with the fuel trucks needing to get back and forth and there's being three companies. Some feedback on how and who has priorities under, under what parts of the tariff, is it being followed? You know, so those things that keep coming up in particular. The Caring Place Bridge, the temporary road is, I believe, might even be, but if not, is pretty close to being completed. So I'm just keeping an eye on, our engineers will be out Friday to do onsite visit for that as well as the garage site. Demolition of the current bridge is expected to, all weather dependent, of course, but take place within the next two weeks. Or start in the next two weeks. And then they'll be able to start working on that sub, subgrade work and, and put the footings in. And then they'll be able to insert the, remember it's like a bottomless precast culvert. So they'll be able to put that in, if that's on schedule for delivery sometime in mid-March. The garage site, they, we've been receiving shipments for materials for the salt, sand, salt shed. The company, one of the companies doing the building work has been on site for the garage, working on the garage. I don't know if they actually got the roof on, but I know they wanted to start with the roof and insulation work last week. That towards the end of the week and this week has not been great so far. So they'll be again checking in on all of that on Friday with our engineers. We touched on the broadband already. Just a quick overview coming up, the emergency operation team continues to meet weekly. Vaccination plan has been created by the medical center. It's a matter of, you know, the state saying, here's the shipment handed and off and they're ready to go. They've expressed that they could do at least 100 doses per week or more if provided. So for those wondering, you know, they are very active in trying to advocate and make sure that those are available to residents out here. So they don't have to go back and forth on the boat with limited headcount as. And we've been going through some upgrades and updates with some of our current software, the Sage 50s, our bookkeeping software and the trio is our receiving, municipal receiving software. We do have to transfer, I believe this is the final phase of that from the old server to the new one, just that data. I mean, we can be able to work with it still, but they do want to get it off of there completely. So we are anticipating having to be closed for part of the day on Thursday in order for that to happen. Depending on the internet speed, it'll either be quick or slower. And with the, with the bookkeeping software, we are just about at the point where, you know, we're going to be able to have the department heads and even myself be able to get access to, to view those report and financial reports as opposed to only relying on the one computer and one person to be able to kind of put those out. So that's, I think, a huge improvement all for throughout the year and definitely during budget season. And that's all I have.
Report of members.
I just had a question for Andy about the culvert up at round the island road. Have you had any chance to look into that?
No, not in the last, no, I have not. It's, like I said, generally on our list, but we have a lot of capital projects. Last time I talked with the state, it didn't sound too excited to just do the work. It sounded like it would have to be some sort of municipal share program. You know, it's a state aid road, but it's a low volume state aid road, so it doesn't sit at the top of their priority list. You know, so I, I mean, short of having a work order from the engineers to start working on something with us to figure out what we want to do. I mean, there's kind of two issues, right? There's the, the part that floods, which is a part of a road settling issue. And then the water coming into that cove is almost like another issue in of itself. So there's those, both those components there. And if we want to have a work order from the engineers, I can get them to work something up to show us what it'll cost to have them start working on that with us. And we can put it in next year's budget if you want.
Okay, that'd be good.
I have a couple of things. One, one is about the ferry. If they don't want people down there idling their car, why do they make them come down there half an hour before the boats? I mean, part of the reason before was because they needed the standbys there, but the standby system has changed. So why is it 15 minutes in Rockland and half an hour on Vinaleve? And it seems like that should be changed to be the same 15 minutes on this side. If the reservation is going to be there 15 minutes before, especially now where they make you, oh, I don't know if they make you, but they suggest that you come and get your line number and tickets the day before. The toilets aren't open inside. I mean, there's a lot of reasons it should be changed. I don't know if that's something we need to send a letter about or if that's Phil and the tariff committee.
Sounds like the peers committee has a deep ask, just like that.
I mean, it seems like it would only make sense. The second thing I had, Andy, did you have that meeting about the library, town library, school library thing?
I did. I, I called and tried with Monty for a few minutes before we had the meeting. We have had a meeting with he and I, as well as Scott, our library director and I think three staff members from the, from the school. You know, there was a lot to outline and understand exactly what the school's looking for. You know, it's not as simple as checking books in and out. That's something that, you know, is relatively easy to train on. You know, they have bigger needs in, in meeting research needs for students and staff. They're also have curriculum needs to meet for reading. And, you know, there's just, you know, our, our staff are not sitting idly by, you know, they are still working, they are still checking stuff out. You know, we did talk about the ability to, to help with some research things in particular. But as far as the, you know, curriculum and, and instruction and having them physically in that building to do stuff throughout the day, you know, they, we aren't, we aren't currently available to be able to do that.
All right. And my last thing is, is it, is there any chance that you or anyone else on the board, there's a lot of this whale, whale stuff coming out. I just found out now that the biological opinion just came out last week and it says that basically they want to shut down lobster in by 2031. So I think that maybe we should be at least sending a letter saying how devastating, you know, there's a public comment period for the next couple of weeks that we should probably, I don't know if you could put something on there as a town manager or but I mean, I know that Stonington is, is doing some stuff for the two different, different things that are, that comment periods on different things. So I think it's something that we should be doing.
Can you send me information on that?
As soon as I get it, I was just talking to the DMI commissioner today, Pat, and he said it was a thousand-page proposal that just came out last week and he's still trying to digest it, but that he was gonna be sending out some stuff this week. So as soon as I get it, but the other proposal's been out there for, I can forward you that link, so.
Could you forward it to all of us?
I can forward you the one that I have now. And when I get the other one, I will. The other, the other reports, 360 odd pages of, of the stuff that's going to be coming out soon. And that other report is, is a future looking thing, I guess. I don't know. I haven't actually seen it yet, so, but.
What organization might be best to, or organizations, I shouldn't assume there's only one, would be best to touch base with, if I were to call some?
I think it's due nowhere, but then National Marine Fisheries Service, so.
I'm just thinking like of any and like me and like the, the union, the MLA.
I mean, they, yeah, the MLA and, I mean, they're all involved in doing different stuff. So I mean, you could touch base with either one of them, but I mean, that one that came out last week, according to the DMI commissioner was something that they had not foreseen. So it went way, it went way beyond what anyone was thinking it was going to be.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that's all I have, but we should definitely, I mean, with behind Stonington, we're always second on the list. So we should definitely at least put a public comment out there as a town, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this lines up, you know, in so many ways with the strategic plan you guys outlined, right? And I mean, the, the future and economic development, what roles we play in it short-term, long-term issues and, and needs. And it's definitely something we can dive into.
I'll forward that first one when we get done tonight. So that's all I had.
Does anyone else have anything? Okay, seen nothing. I move, we adjourn.
Second.
By Pam Alley. Eric Gasper, any votes? Yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson?
Yes.
Pam Alley.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Have a good evening.